Okay, I'd like to call the meeting, the regular business meeting of the Board of Education, for Monday, March 22nd. The order, if we could all stand please and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
All right, can I have the roll call, please?
Steven Arthur.
Present.
Alex Kelly-Powell.
Here.
Patrick Grudy.
Here.
Carol Lunsda.
Here.
Ellen Bauer.
Here.
Marsha Oberweiler.
Present.
Judy Sugarman.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Tonight's agenda, we have our special educational presentation this evening is from the Special Olympics. We really have nothing on the President's Report. We have reports from our two school board, student school board representatives. Our superintendent's report will allow some time for public comment. I would remind anybody from the public who would like to speak that we do have a three-minute timeline. The regular consent vote agenda, and then updates from the Program and Personnel Committee, Facilities and Finance Committee, really nothing on the Property Committee. We will have an update, Special Education District of Lake County, nothing to report in Illinois Association of School Boards, and that should wrap it up. Okay? Our Special Education presentation.
Yes, at this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Andy Compton, who will share with us and celebrate some of the recent achievements of our Special Olympics team.
Thank you. This is time. Thanks for having us tonight. We, just before I get started, I really appreciate, we all really appreciate all the support the district and board and everybody's given us throughout the years. This is our 10th year doing this, and wow, it's been a great decade, and we're just looking to build for more. And with all the support we've gotten from the administration and from the district, it's been tremendous, so we really appreciate it. So, thank you very much. Tonight, behind me here, our visit to the Bulls game. We actually got to play at the United Center, and I'll go through that in just a second, but while that's going, you can watch us, we're all on there, having a good old time. We started off the season by adding five or six new athletes, actually six now, which brought our totals up, made it for two basketball teams, but we kind of combined them into one. We focused this year more on basketball. We got away from floor hockey, although we did play some floor hockey games. At the beginning of the year, we focused our attention on basketball, played about 12 games, did pretty well. We practiced play throughout the Illinois region. Unfortunately, our area is Area 2, which is basically, we're about the only north team at the moment. They're going to switch it next year so that we are up in Lake County, but at this moment, we go down, we play in St. Charles and all in those areas. So, there's a few bus trips, a few late nights, but a few great basketball games as well. So, our season started by doing that. We played a number of basketball games, okay? And in the middle of the basketball season, we have to take a timeout for snow shooting. And we have done a wonderful job in snow shooting over the years. It's one of our favorite sports. And these four athletes right here, I'll introduce in a second, I'll compete in it. We were able to get four, let's see, four of our athletes downstate this year, and you have to win a gold medal at the area games to do so, and they did so. They went downstate, and those four athletes won six medals. Four of them were gold. It was an outstanding event, that's the top of the group there in Galena, Illinois, so they did an awesome job. And after celebrating that, the week after that, or actually the week before we actually got to go to state, we had our team play here at Vernon Hills for our basketball area tournament. And the winner of that in our divisions gets to go downstate, which was just this past weekend. Unfortunately, we only got the silver in that one, but you can't win them all. So, we did all right with that. But to celebrate the season, we got a great opportunity, which you see right here. This was just a wonderful thing where we were invited down to play with another high school, West Chicago to be exact. You had to sell some tickets, 150 to be exact, and the great thing about that, we were kind of talking it over, making sure we could do that, and to be honest, they probably could have sold about 300. That's how great of turnout we had, and actually, a couple of the parents here were involved in selling about 120 of them. They were awesome, and they were all there. They were all great, and we had a wonderful turnout here. It was March 10th, it was a Wednesday night, and a whole lot of fun. We were able to get down there before game time. You go down to where all the Bulls come in, they do all their stuff, we get to go down, be right with them, where they're at, didn't quite get to see them, but we're right where they go, into their tunnels, all that stuff, we're walking around, we get introduced, we're on the court while, you know, some of the pre-game stuff's going on, and game time, we're 15 minutes before they actually took the court. We're on the court, playing our basketball game, real fun time, everybody's getting in and out, we're shuffling in and out, you have 15 minutes, you guys gotta go, 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 and basically, just had a great time, wonderful game. And at the end of that, you know, you walk out and the Bulls walk in. Very cool. So, you walk right in with that, and it was a wonderful experience. So, I think, well, there to do these guys to you, real quick. First of all, Jim Rogers, come on up here, he's my right-hand man. He helps me keep it all together, right?
I would like to thank everybody also for all our support, very much.
Okay, then we have, tonight, we have Doug Ardiello, he's our old man, he just told me today he's 46, according to the Wii Fitness thing, so. Come on up here, Doug, come on up here, Doug. Doug, come on up here. It's all right, Doug, I think they have me at 55. Doug is our oldest statesman, and he actually participates in everything that we do, and it's been great to have him here. And guess what, we have to let him go this year, he turns the magic age of 22, so we have to, just move on. So, we're gonna miss you, because when we started, he was honestly, he was this tall. So, and now he's awesome. Ann Jennings.
Andy.
And, and is our, what, energy, energy of the team, right? And you want to say something, don't you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi, thanks, I just want to thank my coaches, Constance Rogers, they're the best, and we couldn't have done it without them. I mean, they're, they're my inspiration, I love you.
Laura Steen, and she is, how many years you been with us? What's going on, what now? She's one of our newer members, but four or five years now, is that right? And she actually brought a ton, she's clanging all over the place, but she's got a lot of medals, so I told her to take a couple off, and maybe go around and show you guys what the gold medals look like. So, watch out for the wires.
These are my Special Olympics medals for swimming.
And by the way, these two made it downstate in swimming already for the summer games. And Will Sebel, come on up here. All right. These are, these are co-captains. He's one of our captains of the team.
Yeah, he is.
And he keeps us, he keeps our guys going in the right direction.
You could have got closer.
And he today only brought a couple of his medals, but he's wanting a share of them, and I think he would have had a neck injury tonight if he wore them all. So, he's done a great job with us as well. Again, these guys have been great, they're only four of a group of about 16 to 20, depending on our sport, and they have been tremendous throughout, throughout our 10 years. And try to think what else we need to talk about. It's been a great year.
How big is it? How big is it?
We do have coming up, I mean, this was our winter season that we just completed. We now have started into bocce, we've started into track and field, getting ready for that, and we have bowling as well. And of course, these two have off, we don't do swimming, but they've jumped into swimming at CAPS, right? I believe, or something like that.
Stars.
Stars.
Winning stars.
There you go. And they will be going down. So, all of our competitions now, the winners of those go to the state summer games for the state games this summer, and that's a whole lot of fun. And so, these two will already be there, hopefully these two will join them, and we'll have a good old time.
And I'll be moved.
And just, just for, you guys step aside just for a second. There are moms, some of the moms back here, and they are just the core of our good team.
It is, really, it is the best program you could have, really, the best run. Our kids gave so much, so thank you.
But hey, without them, I'm not kidding, when we went to the Bulls game, I mean, between, we had, the Jennings alone had, what, about 300 people? So, when we got to the game though, and I was at a game, they invited us to see a game and how it went a couple of months before, and my son and I went and we watched the game, and we watched how they did things with the Special Olympic teams that played. They came out and played, and they got a pretty good round of applause, you know, the teams were kind of supported, they were there, but you really didn't hear a lot, and we were right on the court side, you didn't hear a lot. Well, when we went with our guys here, and thanks to all of you for getting all the tickets sold and all that, but we walked on that court, I'm not kidding, I felt like there were 3,000, 4,000 people cheering for us. I mean, it was so loud, it was almost like we were right there playing between 18,000 people. It was really neat. And so, and it's just a great experience for you guys, and well, you know, I'll never forget it, and maybe we'll do it again sometime. It was so much fun. But that's the support they give us, and I, we couldn't do it without them, so they deserve all the round of applause. And that's all we have, we're just looking forward to spring.
All right, yeah, I thought, it's not every day you get a chance to get a photo with a gold medal winner, so.
That's right.
Well, anytime. You know, I will take one, a good photo.
Absolutely. If you guys can share, can I share some else?
That'd be great.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Have a good night.
All right, so that was a nice way to start the evening. Let me, President's Report, I guess just one reminder, in the board packet, there was information relating to the annual superintendent's evaluation, which is coming up soon, so you'll be getting more information on that shortly. If you could, make sure you get that information back to me as quickly as possible, and we'll review that, I believe, in April, or October, okay? That's it on the President's Report. Reports from our school board representatives, who would like to start this morning's assessment?
Sounds good. Got actually a month of great news at VHS. We're very proud of our palms team, who brought home another state championship this year. We had an assembly two weeks ago to honor their achievement and watch them perform their first in-state palms routine and second in-state dance routine. And we also recognized our DECA members, who are going to Nationals this year, and our other business club at BLA is also doing extremely well and is sending 38 kids down to state this weekend. So, we hope they have a good time and bring back a few more awards, and maybe some of them will be going to Nationals as well. And our Y's team also won first place at their sectionals, and will be heading down to state in April. On the other side of things, a lot of students at VHS have also been getting involved in community service. We have had many ongoing fundraisers for earthquake relief in Haiti that sort of got kicked off by the sophomore student council, and we have all the clubs in the school just contributing, and we've raised over $1,000 with that, and we're continuing on that path. I know we have a shop and drop coming up this weekend, a domino sponsored by one of our clubs for the earthquakes, so hopefully we can do more with that. And then at the same time, we're getting back into our co-project again this year for building schools in Uganda and helping out the children there, so you'll see a bunch of different fundraisers going on in the school. I know on the previous half-day, we had a bake sale by someone's third-period class, so that's always nice to see. And besides that, we're just looking forward to fun events in April, like Mr. Cougar and Rock the Courtyard, and of course, spring break this week.
And as well, LHS is having a lot of exciting things happening. Spring sports are in full swing now, and they started March 1st, so a lot of teams are having games this weekend, the previous week. And our palms play second in lyrical in the state competition and fourth in open palms, so it was great to see that our fellow sister school did really well. And Stevie Whitmer is a senior, he finished second at state in the 50-yard freestyle and third in the 100-yard freestyle, and I know that he was traveling to Florida to do some more competitions. Girls lacrosse had their third annual varsity lock-in at the school on Saturday, which was really exciting, and they played games and did team bonding activities to strengthen their communication and have, kick off a great season. Boys lacrosse will be traveling to Tennessee over spring break and to play in the tournament, so we wish them good luck. And students are already gearing up for AP testing, and forms are due Friday, so it's finally hitting students that it's almost May, which is bittersweet that AP testing is coming, but that means summer is coming as well. And the student council is having their annual spring blood drive this week, and the great thing about that is that one person who donates saves three lives, and so it's always been successful, and it's a really great way that students and faculty can get involved. And of course, spring break is coming, so people are really excited about that, especially with this nice weather, people are ready for some more.
Snow melted.
Yeah.
Good, very good, thank you very much, enjoy spring break. Okay. Superintendent's Report, Mr. Lee.
Well, we're just going to keep the good news coming this evening, as is always a fun part of the meeting for me and the district administrative team. Libertyville High School senior Alex Politakis was selected as a semifinalist for the U.S. physics team. His performance places him in approximately the top 10% of students taking the exam nationwide. The following students were named Vernon Hills High School Cougar Class Act Word winners for March. Brian Maldonado, Tyler Peterson, Austin Vitaleano, Fallon Fayah, Bridget Munoz, Hannah Gunning, Lisette Gonzalez, Samantha Zenny, Renan Chu, and Jacob Patterson. LHS 2008 graduate Sarah Fluger has been awarded Barbara Lott's Scholarship for Future Teachers by the American Association of Physics Teachers. Successful applicants receive a stipend of up to $2,000 that may be granted for all four years. The following District 128 students were recognized as IMEA All-State Musicians. From Vernon Hills High School Chorus, Emily Paul, Luke Hanson, Cole Moffett, John Papandrea. In Orchestra, Lisa Chertok, Joseph Ho, Jason Song. In Band, Laura Brooks, Danny Park, Eddie Rumses, Michael Wagner, Mitch Evatt, and Andrew Welter. The Libertyville High School Chorus, Rosie O'Connor, Claire Zalata, Kirsten Frumpkin, and Ben Paulson. In Orchestra, Lee Starovich, Megan Lathan. And in Band, Keri Hughes, Allison Schaffernock, Hannah Diamond, Jackie Hong, Alan Pham, Patrick Thompson, and Kyle LaCochie. The VHS DECA Business Club recently joined over 1,000 DECA members from across the state at this month's 2010 Illinois Association of DECA Career Development Conference in Decatur. At the conference banquet, scholarships from the Illinois Foundation for Marketing Education were presented to outstanding senior DECA students. VHS DECA member Mitch Bukar received a $1,000 scholarship. The Outstanding Service Recognition Award was presented to VHS DECA sponsor Cheryl Olson in recognition of 14 years of dedicated services to the Illinois DECA Board of Directors and as the State Officer Team Advisor. In addition to the many honors received by VHS club members at the competition, the following 15 students will advance to this year's international competition in Louisville, Kentucky. Sophomores Erin Bolanowski, Lauren Grudy, Raitash Mishra, Jared Moore, Rohan Varshni. Juniors Marco Filomen, Patrick Zupak, and Seniors Joel Bissel, Robert Bryant, Mitch Bukar, Ben Chaco, Brandon Curry, Eric Hensier, Alec Larson, and Eric Oberweiss. Congratulations to the following students, who will be recognized as March Students of the Month at a celebration later this week. Zachary Labrum, Natalie Salton, Clay Cusek, Ryan Bennett, Nicholas Coutray, Nathan Wolf, Donna Dom, Bradford Razel, and Kelly Hackendall. LHS senior Alex Politakis and Li Tang Long have advanced to the U.S. National Chemistry Olympiad National Exam. LHS girls varsity basketball head coach Katie Swanson has, or Kathy Swanson, I'm sorry, has been selected by the Illinois Basketball Coaches Association as the District 6 Co-Coach of the Year. Local high school students were recently given the opportunity to try real-world fashion merchandising as part of a clothing display contest held at Plato's Closet in Libertyville. 10 local high school students created wall displays using store clothing and accessories. Congratulations to VHS student designers Katia Adami, Mirna Cervantes, Casey Gallisdorfer, Paola Marin, and Elaina Ufa for receiving the most votes on their displays. They will receive a $250 shopping spree and custom-created coupons for every VHS student. The VHS designers were students of Janie Wolf. Landscape design professionals from Jane Martin's Associates will once again graciously donate their time to help VHS VH2O Club spruce up the school's courtyard on April 17th in celebration of birthday. And finally, VHS 2002 graduate Michael Tatts was recently featured in a promotional video for the United States Military Academy at West Point. First Lieutenant Tatts was the first VHS student representative to the Board of Education and a member of the first graduating class at VHS. Please take a brief moment to enjoy this inspiring and motivational video featuring one of our own.
First Lieutenant Mike Tatts is but one in a long gray line of proud West Point graduates.
What West Point does, I think, better than any school in the whole country, is they push you in a way that, that you've never been pushed before.
The United States Military Academy at West Point topped Forbes Magazine's list of best colleges in the country. It was here that Mike Tatts met the rigorous challenges in the classroom and on the wrestling mat, while forging relationships that will last a lifetime.
The buddies that I made at West Point, they went from friends to family. These guys are like my brothers.
One summer, Mike took advantage of a cadet program to further enhance his academic experience.
So, many upperclassmen choose to go to foreign countries, some work with the CIA, the New York SWAT team, work at the Pentagon, there's endless opportunities. I wanted to learn leadership from some of the greatest athletes in the world, so I decided to write a letter to George Steinbrenner, and sure enough, that summer, I found myself standing on the field of Yankee Stadium, hanging out in the dugout.
Just two years after graduating, young officers like Mike Tatts face new and more urgent challenges.
I worked with intercontinental ballistic missiles and large-scale missile defense. I get reminded time and time again that I have to protect the lives of every American.
Sir, the agent ships confirm that there's a third threat in the system.
Doctor, anyone wherever to shoot a nuclear missile at the United States, it would be my job to take that threat out of the sky.
Target Honolulu, Hawaii has been destroyed.
Today, Mike and his wife Shannon, a former Fulbright scholar, enjoy the stability and benefits of an officer in the United States Army.
We've gone down to the Galapagos Islands in Ecuador, went out to Cancun, and we stayed at this beautiful resort right on the beach.
There you go.
I taught Shannon how to ski. It was so much fun watching her. I was able to buy a house, I invested in the stock market. Being able to say that you're a homeowner is definitely an evening, especially when you're only 25 years old. I feel like I have something to give back. It's great to be able to volunteer my time and coach young kids. I just hope that I can be a role model for them, the way that I had coaches being role models for me when I was in high school.
But perhaps the greatest gift to any cadet is that of the long gray line and the relationships forged within the old stone walls of West Point.
The hard work, all the discipline, every last bit of it has been worth it.
Now, is that a nice way to finish the good news, or what? How about a round of applause for Mike, huh? Okay, next on the Superintendent's Report, the board will note that you have several FOIA requests in your packet this evening that we are addressing, and we have several donation, donations to the district tonight that we'd like to recognize. First, we'd like to recognize Mrs. Laura Klatch, who has generously donated a large number of various fiction and nonfiction books to the Library Media Center at Community High School District 128 Vernon Hills High School campus. So, thank you to Mrs. Klatch. We'd also like to recognize Mr. James Monahan. Mr. Monahan has donated his collection of historical newspapers to the district. These newspapers will find a good home with the high school students of Community High School District 128 at Vernon Hills High School. And finally, tonight, we have a number of donations from Mr. Lynn Pergander in Mundeline, and he has donated a number of very expensive camera items, including lenses and filters that will be used at our school district and particularly at Libertyville High School. So, we'd like to thank him for his donations as well. And under other this evening in the Superintendent's Report, we have several things, and another piece of good news, and I would ask at this time if Yasmin and Pat and Marcia would just come back here. We have a really nice presentation that we'd like to do, and I'm going to read the presentation, and if you guys would stand up there, I'll read this, and then Yasmin can present it to you. This is from the Illinois House of Representatives Certificate of Recognition, sponsored by our local representative Carol Centi here in Vernon Hills. It's from the 96th General Assembly, the House of Representatives from the state of Illinois to Community High School District 128. They acknowledge our work and in recognition of receiving the meritorious Budget Award for Excellence in the Preparation and Issuance of a 2009-2010 School System Annual Budget. Again, offered by Carol Centi, and congratulations to Yasmin and Jess and all the people in our business department and the other administrators in the district for their work in helping Yasmin achieve this award. So, Yasmin, if you'd like to present this, and I'll have Mary take a picture.
One, a couple of other things on the Superintendent's Agenda tonight. The board will recall at our last committee meeting that in this age of new communication, not new to our students, of course, but newer to us as adults, there are a number of ways that students can now communicate with adults in the schools and adults can communicate with students. And in doing some investigation to create some expectations to make sure that our students were safe and that our staff was protected, as well as the district, we began to research some expectations and guidelines that we could use with our staff and the district. And in doing that investigation, we found that very few districts, not only in our area, but in the state and in the country, have expectations. So, we have been working over the past several weeks to refine those expectations. We are just about done with our drafts, and then we'll be sharing those with our staff members. And again, we want to continue to embrace technology in the district, but we want to make sure that along the way, we're doing that appropriately and we can provide guidance for our staff. And Mary is with us this evening, and Mick Torres, and I don't know if either one of you have additional comments that you'd like to make, Mary or Mick?
Well, I'd like to share, get those around, yes, the latest version of the expectations that we drafted based on the input that we received from the, from the board at the last heartbeat. And really, just to echo what Prentice had said, that more and more staff are using these tools, and we just really want to make sure that we have clear expectations that are going to protect the staff, the students, make sure that everything is done in a, in a uniform, acceptable way, and just raise awareness of positive and negative things that can be entailed when you're dealing with electronic communication. What we've come up with is naming it the TAP test. And TAP stands for, is your communication transparent, accessible, and professional? So, we've outlined the whole criteria for the TAP test, and really, it can be used for any type of electronic communications that are sensitive.
Mick, anything else?
Again, we will not be bringing this to the board as a policy, but we saw your endorsement at the committee meetings, we thank you for that, and obviously, we will share the final version of the document with you as we share it with staff, so thanks once again for your support. And finally, Judy, just, if you thought I forgot, recently, we have the District 128 Foundation Superintendent's Breakfast to recognize our donors to the foundation, and once again, we had a great turnout for the event. We're very excited about the work of the foundation. A year or so ago, we did not have an endowment, we have a nice-sized endowment at this point, we're still able to, as a foundation, support a number of innovation grants to enrich and enhance the educational experience of our students, and I think we're very excited about moving forward. The last two breakfasts, last year was our first one, and the one we had. What we've come up with is naming it the TAP test. And TAP stands for, is your communication transparent, accessible, and professional? So we've outlined the whole criteria for the TAP test, and really, it can be used for any type of electronic communications that are sensitive.
Mick, anything else? Again, we will not be bringing this to the board as a policy, but we saw your endorsement at the committee meetings. We thank you for that, and obviously, we will share the final version of the document with you as we share with staff. So thanks once again for your support. And finally, Judy, just if you thought I forgot, recently, we have the District 128 Foundation Superintendent's Breakfast to recognize our donors to the foundation. And once again, we had a great turnout for the event. We're very excited about the work of the foundation. A year or so ago, we did not have an endowment. We have a nice-sized endowment at this point. We're still able to, as a foundation, support a number of innovation grants to enrich and enhance the educational experience of our students, and I think we're very excited about moving forward with it. The last two breakfasts, last year was our first one and the one we had a couple of weeks ago, are just really exciting events, and you really get an electricity among the people there that they're really doing good work, and it's our opportunity to say thanks. So Judy, you want to comment?
That was a very, very nice breakfast, and also, there will be donor plaques in each of the high schools, as well as in the district office, to honor and thank those people who have been kind and generous enough to donate to the foundation. We are, what, in our third year of operation, and every year, we get better, and every year, it gets more exciting. But thank you all, not only for your support, but for your donations as well.
And we're always looking for volunteers as well on the foundation. So even if you do not want to serve on the board, but you'd like to play a role in the foundation, you can certainly contact Judy Sugarman, or Ann Langraff, or any of the board members, or me at district office, and we would be happy to network with the foundation. So thanks again. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Next invitation for public comment, is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak tonight? If you could just state your name and address, please.
My name is Mike Dolson. I live at 1160 Hampton Lane in Mundeline. Good evening. Some of you guys here may know me. My name is Mike Dolson, as I said before, and I'm a VHHS senior. I'm here tonight because I have some concerns about the internal affairs of the school. It's come to my attention that next year, there will not be a single returning college grad American with a teacher. This will partially be due to four resignations coming from the interim English Department head, who is not certified to teach English. This decision is irresponsible on the part of the administration because it will hurt the continuity necessary for the English Department to achieve its goals. It's my job as a responsible member of the student body and as school newspaper reporter to voice my concerns to the board. I request that on behalf of the student body, that there is more transparency in the internal affairs of the school administration. I want to know why so many teachers have resigned this year. I suspect that there may be something unethical going on. It is disconcerting to see so many changes being made in staff without any reasons being made apparent to myself and my parents. I thank the school board for hearing my concerns tonight, and I hope that my words carry some impact for myself, my classmates, and future classes. Thank you.
Michael, thank you very much. Okay, next, our consent vote agenda, which is listed in the agenda and was reviewed in committee. I would ask that we have a motion to approve the consent vote agenda.
I move to approve the consent vote agenda.
Second?
Yes. We have to amend the motion. I think these get included in our packets, an amended motion.
I move that the board approve the consent vote agenda as presented, with the corrections of retirement date for Carol Sackley as June 2012.
We had one typo on that sheet, so we just need to make sure it's official for the record.
Then I second the amended.
Okay, roll call, please.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Monstah?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Monstah?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Monstah?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Monstah?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next, we have 2010-2011 Annual Staffing Recommendations. We'll have a little brief introduction from Superintendent Lee, and then we will look for motion to approve the annual staffing recommendations.
Thank you, Ellen. As the board knows, staffing cycle is among the most important leadership processes that the district and building administration coordinate and facilitate for three reasons. One, staffing recommendations directly impact 80% of the district budget. Two, staffing recommendations balance the fine line between our financial reality and our district strategic and school improvement plans. And most importantly, three, staffing recommendations ultimately impact students. Following critical work at the building level, the district leadership team, which includes the building principals and the assistant principals with master scheduling responsibilities, meet for several days and review the district strategic and school improvement goals, student performance data, high priority achievement objectives, student course requests, historical student requests, and staffing patterns, physical classroom limitations such as required science lab stations, and special education IDEA class size restrictions, and our short and long-term financial plans to determine department, building, and district certified staffing or full-time equivalency FTE recommendations. While running out a number of scenarios for each individual course, departments, the schools, and the district as a whole, the team is charged for striking the balance between meeting the educational needs of all students and staying within the limitations of existing future resources as dictated by our short and long-term financial plan. As the primary instructional leaders, we empower the building principals to recommend the precise staffing adjustments that will meet the overall goals and objectives of their school improvement plans, which are based on student performance data while aligning with our shorts and long-term finances. As LHS and VHHS continue to refine their individual school improvement plans based on the needs of their students, that allocation of staffing may look a bit different at each school, while still being very similar. That simply means that LHS and VHHS are doing what they should be doing to increase the achievement of their individual student populations. Al Fleming, Yasmin Data, Deb Larson, Ellen Swift, Marina Scott, John Gilliam, and Ollie Stevens did highly commendable work in striking the right staffing balance this year. Special thanks to Deb Larson, as always, for her work in reviewing and accounting for the hundreds of scenarios generated by the process. As a result of our work, our final staffing recommendations for the 2010-2011 school year include a request of minus one FTE, or reduction of one full-time teaching position, which translates to savings of an average teacher's salary with benefits of $80,000. As always, we would recommend that the board allow us to keep .4 of that negative one FTE for contingency in the event of an unexpected rise in general enrollment or special education students. By doing so, the administration is able to adjust to such variances without coming back to the board for approval. As always, we will inform the board if we need to use any of the .4 contingency. With that said, Al, Deb, Marina, and Ellen are available to answer any questions that you might have this evening. I will open it up for questions.
I'm the one who scrutinizes the sectioning. And I actually called Deb this weekend for Deb on a Sunday afternoon, and I got Ellen and Marina prior to the beginning of the meeting so that they could answer some questions. They did an excellent job of sectioning. There are a couple of things that kind of break my heart that relate to foreign language, and the demise of the French program as a result of the elimination of the theater school, and the German program is also losing enrollment, and that is personal to me, having been a foreign language teacher and the department supervisor. But you guys did a great job of sectioning. It's never very easy. It's an incredible balancing act, and there's always give and take, and I had very, very few questions about it, and I appreciate your help and your input, and good job.
Thank you, Judy.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the 2010-2011 Annual Staffing Recommendations.
Any discussion?
I just say, I have one other question. I was just looking at the Libertyville enrollment. English enrollment was way down. Did I do that right? Yet, the overall enrollment for the school is essentially flat, so...
There's a block that's...
Yeah. And that's based on what we anticipate the students' preferences meant here, or...
I slipped on today's list, I was asking a lot of those choices basically.
Okay.
In the new AP site, that might have been the difference. They might have decided to try and get down.
And same thing, you know, frankly, just looking at the order of magnitude, some of the changes, music was the other one, sort of jumped out, especially the Libertyville music program in particular is so strong. To see it go down 37 kids, I just wonder...
And...
Oh, is that what it is?
There's a band right now.
Okay. And then last but not least, some of the applied tech in Vernon Hills, mostly optimum class sizes are the same between the two campuses. Vernon Hills, I noticed the applied tech were a little lower on average. Is that a facility thing, or why would there be a difference between the two schools now?
Overall, we were pretty consistent last year. We did, we had been trying to... Yeah. In some cases, it is a facility.
Yeah, that's right.
Issue, because the room here might be a little bit smaller for the equipment that they get in it, so that optimum column might explain the difference.
All right. All right, good.
I mean, English, I think almost all of our kids get at least four years of English.
Yes, the average is very high. I can see...
Well, that's why, knowing that, that's why I was surprised it was down.
It just is the way the sections may fall to.
Yeah. And Vernon Hills, there was a literature honors class. They went to, what, World Literature Honors? Is that why? There was one that was canceled by SOF.
Our SOF was, of course, now being called World Lit.
Yeah.
That's a new name. So if you saw SOF lit missing, it was there last year. It has a new name, and it's been called World Lit now.
Okay. Well, that's why I read that, I saw it canceled, I go, how can we cancel that? And my wife, I should keep reading, it's probably World Lit at the bottom of the page. There was, so...
Write it down, right?
Feed the whole story.
It's hard.
Okay.
A lot of science that was on those pages.
Yeah. All right. So again, before we vote on the motion, let me just echo what you said. I was very impressed, looking at it, that we've sort of proactively not only sort of held the line on staffing, but actually gone down one in spite of some increases in enrollment, especially at Vernon Hills. And I think that's a real true, you know, statement of the seriousness with which we as a district are addressing the current economic situation proactively, something that I think we obviously need to do. And frankly, I appreciate the fact that you've essentially done it without any direction to do so. So, you know, that's why it's a wonderful thing and necessary step to take.
I also found that the article in today's Herald was very interesting that helped to elucidate the difference in funding that can exist between schools, where one school has to let go of thousands of staff members, whereas other schools are just happy to be letting one go.
Yeah.
It was very helpful.
Yeah. Well, and I think it's important for our residents to understand that going forward, we don't anticipate those kinds of draconian cuts that they're reading about in most of the schools. So thankfully, we're in a position where we can maintain the kinds of programs that we've had without doing some other things that are necessary in a lot of the other communities. So again, I think that should be greatly appreciated. Okay, roll call, please.
Monstah?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Monstah?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Monstah?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Okay, next, we have, we're looking to approve the annual employment recommendations as presented for continuing employment recommendations and nonrenewal recommendations. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Okay, I guess one, just one question. Just to provide closure to the comments from the public today, maybe if we could just get an overview or an update on the situation that was raised, just a closer look on that. I always feel a little...
Personnel, sure.
Well, not today, not today, but, you know, in the next, in the next committee meeting, whatever the appropriate venue. It's only to acknowledge, I think it's important to acknowledge, if someone brought up an issue, we just close it out. So whatever the appropriate response is to the boards or informants, I'm always a little uncomfortable. We heard one side of the story, I'd like to hear the second side.
Certainly, we can do that.
Not a lot of you, just to make sure that we heard your message. Okay. All right, anything else? Okay, roll call, please.
Mauer?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Monstah?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Monstah?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Monstah?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Monstah?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Monstah?
Aye.
Okay, and finally, under employment of employees, we'd like to approve the three employment recommendations, nonrenewal resignation, and a certified staff request to remain part-time. So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Monstah?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Finished.
Okay, next, facilities and finance committee chairperson, overrider.
Yes, we met, and we have two bid awards that we want to present for approval tonight. The first one on landscape management and fertilizer tree and shrub care. The bids came in, there were eight bids and two no bids, so we had a good response on this. And the low bid is a firm called Alanis Landscape Group from Elgin, Illinois. It's coming in at $31,640 on the landscape management, and on the alternate one for fertilizer tree and shrub care, $2,327, for a total combined bid of $33,967. And this is significantly, I think, over $20,000 under what we paid for those same services in this current year.
I made the motion to approve the low bidder's, Alanis.
Does that continue?
Second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Yelli Pali?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Monsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
The second bid that was open for presentation at this month's meeting was for the Vernon Hills High School Fieldhouse Sound System. Six bids were received, and the low bidder was Top Shelf Technologies for a total bid package of $21,932. And the committee's recommending that for approval. That's coming in approximately $5,000 under what we had estimated in this year's capital budget.
Motion to approve.
I move we accept the low bid.
Second? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Arthur?
Aye.
Yelli Pali?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Monsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
I'd also like to just mention a couple of other things. We had a full committee meeting on March 8. Once again, we spent time talking about the Orchosis Dance Program and evaluating the long-term options for a facility for their, their program. We're continuing to get reports from the district leadership on the different options between different sites and different floor samples, and we'll continue to listen to other information forthcoming at our upcoming committee meeting in April. We hope to have some more definitive answers by the end of the school year so we can make plans for the next year's program. And the second thing I just wanted to mention for the public is that we're continuing to work with the administration on our short and long-term capital plans, and I believe a meeting is going to be scheduled, I think, in April sometime. Hopefully, we get the calendars all together to talk specifically about the long-term capital plan.
Good, very good. All right, anything else? Okay, thank you. Nothing to report on the Property Committee, Special Education District of Lake County?
Yes, we had our quarterly CEDOL meeting on the 3rd of March, and we were, I was expecting that we would be voting on the Lake Cert withdrawal agreement, but it was not quite yet ready, so we're going to have to wait until our June meeting, but I would expect that that would be going here. They just have a little homework to do on it. We toured the new Merriman School, which is progressing wonderfully, and will be ready, still on schedule hopefully on August 1st, so we're able to see that, and they talked about the plans they'll have for the current facility to remodel and just other things of that. So, other than that, they did have a little program beforehand, a little bit like the grant presentations that we had with an R district. They had a grantorama where they had different booths set up where we could go and tour and see the different things that they've done with different grants that they've received at CEDOL. It was very, very interesting and exciting to see the different things that they have currently going on within CEDOL grants, but also grants from outside.
Okay, great, thank you. Illinois Association of School Boards, I will only mention that also in the board packet was an invitation to the spring dinner meeting of the Illinois Association of School Boards, the Lake County Division. That'll be held Thursday, April 29th at Bella Villa Restaurant in Highland Park. The agenda is attached. If you are interested in attending, I believe the registration deadline is April, I want to say 10 here, 10 is what it says, early April. So, that's included in the packet. Is there anything else tonight? No?